I'll second that. All in favor? Alright, Mike? Are you opposed? Does anybody want to go over?
I just want to tell Andy for future reference. Mark's last name is S E M.
Oh, you know, all right, I will make sure.
All over the place, E and O.
Well, you know, and I think my autocorrect keeps correcting it and I keep going back through and making it so. It's correct on most things, but I will make sure that it's on there.
I just know he'd be happy to fit if he saw it.
Does anybody got any questions on the approval of this agenda? Want to add anything?
I'd like to talk to everybody about maybe going up north to where Isabella is, where they just put their turbines in so we could see what the turbine these places looks like. I've been over to the grass it. I'd like to roll over to Isabella just to see the differences. Also, I think I'd like to go over there and talk to their tax assessor.
We can't do it as a group.
Nope, we can't do it as a group.
Three people can go if they would like. I've already been on my own tour of them. And going off because several people, I know that Lynn Maug invited us all up to come up to her place. She would take us around. She was in the spoke at one of her meetings about some of the things that happened up in Isabella. I know the locals have invited everyone over to their place. Anytime they would like to. So I think that should be an individual choice.
Yes, it should be, but I think it'd be a good idea. Again, you can't even write together with the meetings that you'd have to go on your own.
I stopped at Grashit on the way back from the meeting and stuff. Looked at them, pictured and stuff.
Please speak up.
Went to the Grashit on the way back from the MTA meeting and stopped and looked at some of them, took some pictures and stuff, so I saved the Grashits.
I think the ones, I'm not sure, but I think the ones at Isabella are bigger.
I understand that.
Yes.
That's why I kind of wanted to go over and see the difference.
So shall we get an approval of the agenda? If you got any questions? Almost. Motion to approve? To move. Move. Second? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed?
Old business, we're reviewing the change in the wind ordinance. The sound discussion is still postponed for now. Kyle is not here. He has COVID, so he won't be here for either one of the meetings this month. I really think we should probably table any kind of work on the ordinance until we have legal representation here.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Motion for that?
Actually, I'd like a little discussion on that.
Make the motion before the discussion. Motion has to be made before the discussion on what's on the floor. That's according to Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, then make your motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Excuse me?
Anybody want to second that? I'll second it. All in favor?
We didn't discuss yet.
Yeah, there's no discuss. We can't, we can't vote on, we can't, we can't hold on the motion without discussing that first. I have some things I'd like to ask first before we make that motion. Because there's two people here, Lee and yourself, were on the planning commission prior with the ordinance that was made in November of 2020. It was passed then.
Right.
How many times was a lawyer present at your meetings and helped you draft that?
I couldn't tell you.
I can tell you that there was only one time that was mentioned in September of 2020 when John Schwant was given permission to hire Fagie's office to review the wind ordinance. I want to know what has changed so dramatically that we have to waste our taxpayer money, and I'm including myself in this, after reading about all of this stuff, why we as citizens of this township can't make decisions on this without being handheld by a lawyer? I feel very.
Good job, Roger.
I want, what I want to know is.
You're all first, you go first.
What I want to know is, you know, the ordinance that was passed before obviously was taken to referendum and rescinded. That ordinance that was taken and brought to this planning commission prior to us was just basically Pine Rivers. We'll change a few words, we'll do a few of this, it went through. Now, now all of a sudden, we can't take others from, you know.
How many reasons did we have with that ordinance we were going over?
And I can tell you, it was probably eight, eight or nine of them that was mentioned in the minutes.
So it's what we wanted in it. It wasn't just taking Pine River townships. It was using Pine River townships as a baseline.
Okay. Then why is it that we can't, as a commission, look at these other ones like Pearson or Sidney who are literally in our town, in our county and take some of their language? I just, I'm, I just, I guess the way I look.
I mean, I feel that they're too restrictive. I really do.
Well, I think that they're more for the health, safety, and welfare of everyone. That's the way I look at it. But I guess my point is, is I guess.
Why do you come up here for the landowners?
Well.
We're already.
I guess my point to all of this is, we seem to be spending an awful lot of money on an attorney. And I don't know about you guys, but I mean, that's our money. And I just feel that, I mean, did any of you guys request to have the attorney here? I guess that's my question.
Well, personally, I think we need to have the legal wording of anything that we do proper. If there's anything that you can change, a sentence by changing something to is or what those kinds of words are in there. And it can, it can totally deny or approve something that nobody wants.
Well, my point to that is, is why can't we put something new? And then that's when you send to the attorney to say, please review this to make sure that we have the correct verbiage. Because that's what they're supposed to do. They're supposed, we're supposed to come up with how we want things to be in our township.
Is the township, has a township got him on retainer? So he's going to be here anyway?
Yes.
So it makes no difference?
No, no.
Because if you read the minutes.
If you guys want to see it.
Later.
If you read the minutes. The motion that the old board made in September was to retain their law firm to review the wind ordinance that they were currently working on. Now, I know lawyers are going to be able to play semantics with their words. And be like, oh, well, that was for any wind ordinance. And try to say that, but that was very specific. And I've read all the minutes. There has been no other motion within the board to authorize any of this. And I guess I didn't realize that until going back, until I started reading the paper and seeing a few things. And I think it makes us look like a bunch of idiots. Because we're not questioning what's going on either. And we're representing the township. And quite frankly, it's our tax money. I guess that's my spiel for tonight. I guess I'd like my fellow commission members to think about that, maybe ask some questions of the board. Because I feel that there is.
I don't think I'd want to write a document without a lawyer here.
Well, let's take, let's take this week out. You know, we just got the weekend. Well, we got next.
The board, the board is Monday, is Monday.
Not this coming Monday, it's the next one.
No. And this is coming.
I gotta look at it. I keep looking at it.
But regardless, that's, that's my point is. You know, there are other ordinances out there that have been used that we can get the general idea of. And then you send it off to somebody that can look at the legalese, like you said, because, you know, want, shall, those words are very important.
Well, let's take it to the board and see what they want to do.
So I guess that's.
It's ultimately up to them. They're the ones that are holding purse strings.
Well, and I say, you know, and if they keep wanting to have there, then let's just pass the damn ordinance and, you know, see what happens. Because I think it's just a huge waste of money.
Pearson then they have it. We started before they did it.
Well, and exactly. And that's now available. And, you know, I've just been talking to a lot of other planning commission members and other planning commissions that have actually gone through this, that have done this. They didn't have a lawyer at, at every single one of their meetings, handholding them. They came up with it themselves. They obviously did research as well. But then they had to obviously, the lawyer looked it over and said, hey, you know what? We need to do this because if you have it worded this way, duh, 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 can happen. But there's my spiel for the evening because, again, I feel that, you know, we need to be looking at those things and be conscious of what our township is spending on money. On them, but.
And I look at it as, I want somebody here that's going to go over some of these. However, many pages, 20 pages that we've been working on and let us know what the legal standing is of it while we're doing it. I think that would make sense.
Well, we went, we went to the MTA meeting we had down there. There's some things that they had in here and they talked about some legal processes that have gone on. We could be on either end of the, either end of this thing if we don't do it right.
Again, that's why you have to review it.
Basically, so.
We don't have them handholding us or running our meetings for us.
Well, they're not running the meeting. And personally, personally, I don't care either way, whether they're here or they're not here, but we need, we do need that, that legalese to make this thing proper.
That is correct.
I'm not an attorney and I do know something about the law, but I'm not an attorney.
So go on with your motion.
We have a couple of times. I don't think we have to be here.
Every single time.
Because that's what you're going to do. We're going to write them and then piece by piece we send us, we're going to do these, send the word back. What was, yeah. One time we did have a problem. He came and explained it a couple of days ago.
And that's.
We hear some comments.
Or you send a list of questions to the attorney and say, here's the information that I, I, we have questions on. And then you move on from there. I guess the way I look at it is I feel that is a, I know how much they charge for all of it.
I don't know how they're billing it. I don't know.
I mean, none of us do. So I guess maybe that's a question that we need to ask the board.
Yes, the board.
So I'm putting it out for thought for everybody that's sitting on this commission because, again, we're dealing with taxpayer money and I think we need to be very transparent about it. And I think we should also, because it's also our money. So that, I mean, that's, here's my Andy spiel for the evening. So you guys do with it what you may.
We've covered a lot of wood with this. By the way, we can just start writing it and.
Exactly.
Every chapter sentence. You don't have to write the board, you know, say the board's what. Get a view and done, ask you if it's okay legal, and then that, that come back and work on something else. You did want to help a couple of things, yeah. These guys have discussed a lot of stuff. They should be able to start writing one now.
And that's what I feel too.
And if we're going to have outbursts in the meetings, we'll just close the meetings down. We can adjourn the meeting because of disruptions. So if we're going to get disruptions, if people going and banging that table and everything else, we're not going to put up with it. We're going to take and adjourn the meeting. So please be courteous to everyone here. And wait your turn. When you have your three minutes to speak, you'll have your three minutes to speak. We will not be answering questions because we'll give you your three minutes. And then if we decide after that three minutes, we will or we won't. And more than likely, we won't. So we can go to it. Thank you.
So Dennis, you made a motion. There's a motion on the floor.
I don't know what the motion was. Somebody had to write that down.
You had a motion that you wanted to table any for the wind ordinance discussions.
Right, for a formal discussion. Let's put formal in there. This is what we just did was informal. And it's postponed, not tabled. If we table it, we have to bring it back up at this meeting.
And did you get a second to that motion, Dennis?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Are you ready? Opposed? Motion passed.
I think we need to, I think I need to, one of us on the floor need to copy some of the pertinent things, pertinent legal things that came out of the, the MTA thing and pass it on to everybody. I've got some of it highlighted here. I'll have to make sure it gets to you later, at a later point in time. But I wanted to bring it up tonight because there's, there's been some court actions that make it absolutely impossible for a township to, to, to make it illegal for these guys to come in at all. You have to have that ordinance to make it so that you can enforce something.
And that's our new business. We want to talk about what you guys.
So I'll, I'll, I'll look over this stuff and I'll get that, I'll get those legal things that they had, that they had set up precedents and stuff for us in here.
I have all of these, all of the presentations that were at the MTA. I have them saved.
Yeah, I've got it.
As PDFs on my computer, so I can just forward them all that.
Oh, yeah, well, there you go. Why don't you forward all of them?
And then you ask them.
I would like, I would like to ask everybody on the board to pay close attention to that stuff that they brought up about the, the legal matters that have already gone to the courts. And it's not just about wind. It's about any way, any particular way that any township or legal entity has, has gone about how they carry out their ordinance or lack of there.
In which session were you talking about? Were you talking about the one that Foster Swift presented?
Is that, is that the one?
That was about renewable energy ordinances or?
Yeah, Foster Swift. I think it's in that one.
Okay, that was the one that.
That's the one that's got the most, most legal stuff in it.
Okay.
There's some other stuff in there. It talks about adopting or, or any kind of procedures you want to for your meeting.
It wouldn't hurt to forward them all to everybody.
Yeah, I would have.
That's what she said, she said. I think, I think we should make a formal motion to adopt the Robert's Rules of Order so that we have, we have a good, we have a good understanding of everybody who's going to file it.
Well, and another thing though is we all got to understand what that is before we.
Exactly.
So if we can get the documentation, we'll go over it.
I'll find a, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll find a book of Robert's Rules of Order and then I'll have it here next, the next meeting and then we can be sure.
I'll forward it to everyone that I have downloaded. Because I do have a Cliffjewels version of it. I just didn't grab it and find it.
I think we should have a hard copy here though, so that we can look at Robert's Rules of Order.
I have it. I just didn't bring it with me this evening.
I got it someplace. Someone's been buried for so many years, I'd never find it. If that's what we want. There's other.
Well, there's probably more out there that you guys.
What was the other one that they, what was the other one that they, Ian, what was the other one that they talked about besides Robert's Rules of Order? What was the name of the other one? That was a formal, formal audit that they.
Guess I didn't catch that.
I can't remember what it was.
Oh, I remember. It was Robert's.
Yeah, I know that was, that's because everybody uses Robert's, yeah.
I guess one of the things that they gave, you know, there was so much information that they gave out to all of us. The meeting guidelines and ground rules for, you know, making sure that you have open meeting compliant meetings. It was very, very informative. And he gave a nice version, the clip, I don't want to say clip note version, but very highlighted the version of things that were commonly done that shouldn't be done. Or things that you should commonly do. So they were, you know, how to call a special meeting. I mean, all these small little things and and just good reminders of all the stuff that we need to be aware of while we're at meetings. Especially since we're a public entity.
Yeah, I don't have it in here. All I have is that we should adopt Robert's Rules of Order to what they, they told us we should use. I remember they said something about somebody else.
Anything else you want to add in there?
I got a, about that, no. Well, I'm, I'm concerned that we might want to. We do, I still, I still think we should start looking at the master plan. It takes time to do that. Sometimes it takes a year to go over that because you're going to want input from all, you want input from, from your industry, from farming, from retail.
Residents.
Residents. You want all of it. So it's going to take time to organize all that. I know it's not due yet, but I don't, I think it took them a year to go through that too, 2019, didn't it?
Took them two years.
Two years, was it?
Started in 2017 and, because I've read it twice and I still don't understand all of it.
But, but if, if it's going to take some time, I don't think it should take us that much time because this one's pretty comprehensive. Even though there's things that need to be changed in it.
There's stuff that we don't have to, you know, fiddle with to change.
Right. Right.
The late descriptions are the late descriptions. Plus, they have to change.
And I forwarded all of you guys the digital copy of the master plan, so you have it on your computer. But I did get a quote from Arrow Swift that I'm going to take to the board about getting all of us a bound, a bound copy.
Oh, bound copy.
So that you can actually look at it. So you have it physically in front of you.
Like the maps?
That would be a whole lot easier.
And they have, they'll have, the maps will be large enough and they'll fold out just like.
Because those are colored and that was helpful as well.
That's correct. So.
That would be a lot of help.
And I have the quote here from Arrow Swift. And the quote, seven of them was $201.21. So I'm going to take that to the board.
You aren't good. Just got, just to be honest. I know that they wanted a couple of books for the PA. I wonder if we can make that into a copy too, because we got a couple like that.
Yeah.
Seven, you know, maybe nine or 10.
And then we can always add more, but I thought I'm going to take it to the board to see if they will approve.
Well, that ain't bad.
To getting.
Yeah, not fifty-eight pages in a book, yeah.
No, and that's for, like I said, the, the maps will be like the legal sized paper that will fold out and fold out so that you can, just like the one, the one physical copy. Because I took the one physical copy that we have.
There's supposed, there's supposed to be a map, the master plan in the clerk's office too. I ain't not know all according to what we understood. There is. I've never, I've never been in there lately, you know, it's been years.
If we could get some office hours so we can go in there and look at it because it's huge.
Wouldn't that be wonderful?
It'd be nice to see it.
Hopefully we see it again and now we might be able to give it a hangout a little bit.
I don't think there was, I mean, there was just so much information that they had on there.
There was more than all, yeah.
It was. And I'm.
Take some time to digest.
Very grateful that I did virtually, so I have access to all of the sessions to rewatch them.
They send them to us anyway.
They are, yes, they're all recordings. We can rewatch them. So that's something that, you know, if you guys wanted to get together, you can always go and, only, you know, two or three at a time, but can go and watch them. It's very interesting. And like I said, they go over everything.
It was very informative. I'm glad I went.
I have, I have to be honest though. I had a terrible time with a couple of them trying to stay awake. I really do. And I don't know if it's my age or it was the content. So I.
That's why I'm glad I was home because I could stand up, stretch, walk around.
You could, you could sleep and nobody could see it.
No, I was awake. It was going. It was blaring near my house. But at least I could, I was listening while I was, you know.
But it was, it was, it was, it was a very good session. It's too bad that the whole thing couldn't come off the way they wanted it to because the township paid good money for it, for all of it. But it.
Yeah, there were three of them that did not have handouts. And I liked the handouts because I could make my notes right at that area and I went along.
Which ones did you guys, did you guys not get for handouts?
It was.
I don't know, but presenter didn't give them to them in time.
There was only one that I didn't get and that was the last one on master plans that didn't have.
Well, there was three. There was three of them that didn't do it.
I have to go over these to see which ones. Site plans and variances, I think was the one topic.
Okay, I will forward them on to you guys because here's the. They had them all for the virtual numbers.
They, well, we received them too. You received, you should have gotten one too in your email. And you should have too. So they're all in there.
Okay.
Well, they didn't have them at the time.
But it's better to have them after classes. They're talking. The classes are full of notes as they taught. I wrote notes alongside what they were talking about.
As from, yeah.
Anybody that didn't go to that though didn't, is not going to receive that email. There's that stuff in it somewhere.
I don't really think there was, I mean, like I said, the Foster Swift, when I found the most, it was about the ordinances and kind of their process of how they wrote them. And different things that they add into theirs and how they come up with different things. So I, I found it very interesting.
Which one?
The Foster Swift one. They had all the legal stuff in it. Because they had the Open Meeting Act stuff as well. And the case summaries of different cases. So that was nice.
This one. There it is. Hit it. Yeah, this is, and it's, how many pages long?
That was a thick one.
This is one of the longest ones. It's got 41 pages. See, forty, of course, a lot of it's set up in, in presentation rather than, I don't know, reading. I think something else we need to do too is, I think we need to brainstorm on it by ourselves and think of, go over our ordinances and think of what ordinances we probably should have, we don't. And make some of them more specific than they are because they're old.
We were going through that before the wind came up.
Oh, okay.
We went over to that so we could get something passed for order. But we had started on that before. We got involved with the wind and solar. With the wind done, we would have started on the solar too.
It's very, yeah, and it's very necessary to stay on top of these things.
Yeah, we were starting on that, going over the, the ordinance that we already got. And there are changes that need to be done.
Is there, do we have to just take up one subject at these meetings all the time or can we deal with a couple of them at a time?
Well, we went through quite a few on one. Yeah, we did. We were down here for a couple of hours going through a lot of these ordinances. I think we made a bag of the hardest ones we got about the tools. Yeah, but then the wind stuff started coming in. We had to throw our time on that. But yeah, then we do know that there are a lot of things that have to be addressed. There are a lot of them. I agree.
I, I just, I'd just like to ask. We can over and kind of brainstorm, make, make notes where you can.
Yes. Yes, to be able to look at it and look at future use, land use maps that are already in there that are plotted out.
That they're going to do is, I don't mean that they're going to do it, but I don't know if we ever got one or not.
I only have one copy.
I was sold one copy. Was it Roger or is that it?
Yep, I give it to Andy.
And I have it from Roger so I could take it to get.
A lot of the reading. There we are.
There's, it's kind of informative and there's other parts that don't make a lot of sense.
I agree.
There's a lot of stuff that, it's just how.
Kind of what's limited. Probably both the.
Yeah.
Talking about what some of the regent or some of the people thought that that was in there.
Did you say?
No, no, what they thought was, what they put in the master plan that other people had put in there that were questionable. You know, to go over the master plan. Some of it.
I found it very informative that a lot of those, when they're telling the master plan about sending out surveys to the, to the township. And I thought, I found that, like, oh, that's kind of a nice concept. And let's get everybody's information back.
It's a little grainer.
Yeah.
That's what I wish we would have done was.
Everybody's township.
It's not too late.
It should be open ended questions too. It shouldn't be yes or no because if you do that, then you're not going to get any information as to what you feel.
Well, and I'd like to ask those ones that he has put up on the scale of one to, one to five or whatever. Or that's three or strongly it's three or not agree at all, you know. So you can see how people felt about different subjects and how, how we wanted things to be done.
And that was.
And that was.
And that was part of the whole master plan thing that's, that's working out.
And that was part of the whole master plan, and that's, that's what you gotta find out, that's what people want to know, so that's what we can do. Not, not a really big piece of copy, thirty-six square miles, not very big, but sure had an impact on people.
Brilliant. Was this one, managing township development, that was talking about the.
Can't see it, you can't see it.
Not very well, and I, but you can see it.
I think that's where our copies were too, and they even said that, well, you might be able, night night, be able to see this, and thought, I don't know, Anne spoke up there, and I thought.
Well, yeah, as I say, they had the background very dark, so you can't hardly read what it says, so. But I think that's something that we should import, you know, from the Planning Commission, to send it out.
We can do that, too, that's something else we can do, uh, by ourselves, come up with some questions, and then we can talk about that at the next meeting, too, as to what we want to put into that. And bring that to the board this coming week, too, that that's one of the things we want to start.
What is the master folder, is that made?
Yep, yes.
I think it's one.
Yeah, it's me. So, everybody needs to bring back some questions that they want to, for us to discuss, to put on, we need everybody to bring back questions that we'd like to put out a survey about different things we'd like to see, how people feel about stuff in the township, so if we all bring back some questions for the summer J meeting, that'd be helpful, you know, to kind of narrow it down from there, if we all come up with the same ideas.
Probably half of us, you know, same.
But, you know, or some unique questions, so.
But, and it told you probably what's on a lot of people's minds out there as well. And why are we gonna get them out?
We'll have the board send them out.
Oh, that scout, he's running on, on election, doesn't he?
No.
No, or doing a survey. Oh, that's not wrong, if they do a vote, they do a vote, and they put it on the ballot.
That would be a referendum, you're talking. Just, uh, this is kind of like a, call it a straw vote on many subjects.
Yeah.